Starting now, okay. As a preliminary matter, this is Jean McKnight, Planning Board Chair. Permit me to confirm first that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Paul Alpert.
Here.
Adam Block.
Here.
Marty Jacobs.
Present.
Yes, and Ted is not with us tonight, our member. Work called him away. Permit me to confirm also that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. So when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Our staff, Lee Newman.
Here.
And Alex Klee.
Here.
Others who are representing applicants or are themselves applicants. George Jenta Jr.
Hi.
David S. Kelly.
Present.
Elizabeth Schmidt Schreiber.
Yes, I'm representing Elizabeth and hear you loud and clear, no video, thank you.
And are you Moritz Schmidt?
Correct, yeah, that is I, yep.
Yes, all right. William Persek.
I am here.
David N. Kelly.
Present.
Brandon Lee.
I'm here.
Robert Smart.
I'm here.
Evans Huber.
Present.
Phil Trussell. Phil Trussell is a representative of Christ Church of Needham.
Mr. Trussell's here, but it looks like he's got his microphone on mute. Phil, can you unmute?
I don't see a block, oh, I see, I see his face, yes, Mr. Trussell.
Yeah.
Yes. And Stan Hietron, also a representative for Christ Church, yes. So I'm going to say some words about the remote meeting, particularly for the, to assist those persons who might be tuning in. Good evening. This open meeting of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. And in order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. And access to this meeting has been posted on the town's website so that anyone can listen to the meeting and I assume also view the meeting. But ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. And what I mean by participation is that the person's listening can raise their hand and ask to speak. This meeting does include two public hearings that will feature such public comment. For this meeting, the Needham Planning Board is convening by Zoom app as posted on the town's website. And also, please note that this meeting is being recorded and also that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. Take care not to screen share your computer unless you're deliberately doing so to show materials that are needed to be shown during the meeting. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. And all supporting materials that have been provided to the planning board are available on the town's website so that persons tuning in can go to that website and see the entire packet of materials we're considering tonight. And the public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise that we're skipping, you know, changing the order of things on the agenda, which I don't think we're going to do. Now, before I turn to the first item on the agenda, there are certain ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line, that's me, the chair, will go down the line of members of the planning board, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. So planning board members should hold until these comments, questions, until their name is called. And further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and always state your name before speaking. Now, for items with public comment for the hearings, after the members of the planning board have spoken with their questions, comments, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. And I'll try to at least, you know, make a list of their names so that I then can call on each person who wishes to speak by name. And in general, we will afford three minutes for any comments and try not to exceed that three-minute limit so we can move the meeting along. Now, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to continue any item on our agenda to our next meeting, which is, I should have made that clear, our next meeting, Lee, is August?
August 11.
August 11. And this is only in case we have technical difficulties, we lose everything and there's no opportunity to make that motion at that time.
So.
Mr. Jacobs has moved and Mr. Block has seconded.
Alpert.
Is that right? Oh, no, Mr. Alpert is second.
One of us, I yelled second, maybe Adam did too.
All right. So we have a motion in the second to automatically continue to August, to our August meeting. August 7, right?
11.
August 11.
August 11, right, I heard. Then I will call the roll. Mr. Alpert?
Here.
Yes, do you say yes? Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
And the chair says yes, so that motion passes. So now, we are moving to the first item on the agenda, a request to authorize the planning director to authorize the issuance of a Phase 1 occupancy permit under our decision granting major project site plan special permit, number 201803, to the town of Needham for the property at 1471 Highland Avenue in Needham. And also, subject to that special permit is property at 88 and 66 Chestnut Street, 89 School Street, 43 Lincoln Street. And the special permit regards the police and fire headquarters. And I'm referring to a memorandum to our planning director from Stephen Pauper, who's the town's director of Bill, Building BDNC dated July 10. And what they're particularly looking for is the temporary certificate of occupancy for the property at the address 88 Chestnut Street. And this is the newly constructed Phase 1 portion, the public safety headquarters on Chestnut Street that is anticipated to be completed in August. And the completion of this phase will allow for the movement of the Needham Fire Department to the new facility so that the existing public safety building on Chestnut Street can be demolished and construction can commence a Phase 2 of the project. So is there, first of all, I guess I'll ask for a motion and then we can entertain any discussion. Is there a motion to authorize the planning director to issue, to authorize the issuance of a temporary certificate of occupancy for the 88 Chestnut Street property?
I so move.
Second.
All right, then, is there any discussion or questions?
I have one question, Madam Chairman. I guess I'd direct it to Lee. Lee, as far as you know, do you anticipate any issues with this? I assume the request is being made now because they're concerned that they'll finish at a time when we won't be having a meeting soon after. And you want to keep the project moving?
I believe that is correct. I spoke with Steve Pauper on this, who's the representative on the town side. And I anticipate, you know, getting an interim as-built site plan, interim as-built landscaping plan, and the appropriate certifications on the architectural side. And we'll facilitate an inspection through the engineering department. So yes, I think they're concerned that there won't be a meeting of the board that will allow them to meet their projected opening date.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, I'll ask for a vote. Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
And the chair is also a yes, so that is approved unanimously. So the next item on our agenda is the endorsement of a plan subdivision approval not required for property at 61 and 65 Rosemary Street and 1132 Highland Avenue. And this property is largely used by the Christ Episcopal Church building. So who would like to speak on this? Would that be one of the representatives of the church or?
It'll be me, Ms. McKnight, Evans Huber, on behalf of Christ Church of Needham.
Yes, Evans Huber, of course, the attorney, thank you. Then go ahead.
Okay, thank you, thank you, members of the board. So we're here asking for your endorsement of an A&R plan. There's been a few glitches getting the final version of the plan before you, but we believe that you have it now. And basically, what is happening here is that there are three adjacent properties, 1132 Highland, where the church building itself sits, and then two adjacent properties, 65 Rosemary and 61 Rosemary. 61 Rosemary is currently an undersized lot. It's vacant, but it's an undersized lot, so it can't be developed or built upon. Next to that is 65 Rosemary, which currently has a structure on it. And then 65 Rosemary is right next to the church lot. So the goal of this A&R plan is to create a buildable lot at 61 Rosemary by demolishing the structure at 65 Rosemary and taking the land that was 65 Rosemary and adding some of it to 61 Rosemary to create a conforming lot. And the remaining portion of the land would be added to 1132 Highland. So this will eliminate certain zoning nonconformities that currently exist, certain dimensional nonconformities, and then there are other pre-existing dimensional nonconformities with the church structure that will be eliminated or reduced. And so that's it in a nutshell. The goal is to create a buildable lot at 61, which is currently less than 10,000 square feet.
And I'll start with a quick question and then I'll ask our planning director also to confirm. First, I'll ask Attorney Huber. It appears from my review of the zoning chart that you provided on the plan that no new nonconformities are created by this plan. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you for asking that question and pointing that out because that is true.
And Ms. Newman, do you agree from your review of the plan that no new nonconformities are created? I don't mean to put you on the spot.
I agree.
Yes, yes, all right. And the other, well, let's see, maybe, I don't know if we want to start with a motion and then have discussion or just go right to discussion first. Why don't we go right to discussion? I see Adam wishing to speak.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I have a question and an observation. The observation that I have is a technical one and a minor one. And that is, I don't know on which page this is precisely. It's, I think it's the, it's the plan of land which shows the intended redrawing of the map, so to speak. There is a place for a signature block for the clerk. And it says Clerk Newton Planning Board. And that should probably be adjusted to say clerk for the Needham Planning Board. I'm not sure.
So, Mr. Block, if I could address that, there has unfortunately been several versions of this A&R plan as various people have put eyes on it and noticed that there were some errors with it. And in fact, last week, Mr. Trussell delivered what we had hoped, delivered to Mr. Jacobs what we had hoped was the final version of the plan. But even that version that was delivered last week had some errors in it. The version which we believe has no errors and it wasn't delivered until yesterday, so you may not have that in front of you.
Okay.
But that problem that you're pointing out is not on the current version of the A&R plan.
Thank you for the verification. And then my question is, does the, who currently owns what would become Lot X, 61 Rosemary?
The church.
Okay. And do they intend to subsequently sell that?
I'll let Mr. Hietron and Mr. Trussell are here from the church. I'll let them, one of them speak to that.
Thank you. Mr. Trussell, you're muted.
How's that?
All right, Mr. Trussell, representative of the church, is now speaking.
Yes, it is, definitely our intent to sell that lot.
Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, this is Marty. Just to be clear, because Adam, I think, hasn't had a chance to focus on the new plan, may not have seen it at all. I just want to quickly run down the changes that were made to the prior versions in case anybody else is concerned about that.
Good idea. Please go ahead.
At the top left of the plan, it had said, where it gives references to plans and deeds, it had said Middlesex County Registry of Deeds. It now says Norfolk County Registry of Deeds.
Right.
In that same area, deed references to 61 and 65 Rosemary Street had a misspelling in Rosemary.
Right.
That's been changed in both places. Where it said, it was to be signed clerk of the Newton, what, Newton Board of Survey, I think is what it originally said. It now has a signature block for the five members of the Needham Planning Board. That's correct. I believe those are the list of changes that have been made. Thank you.
And then are there some additional zoning changes? Has that been updated as well?
Yes, at one point, there was, the zoning chart for 1132 Highland was apparently created using the table in the bylaw at 4.2.1, which is for construction prior, prior to, you know, structures built prior to 1986 in various residential districts. The correct table that should have, from which the dimension should have been taken, was 4.2.4, which is for public, semi-public, and institutional uses in residential districts. And so those were corrected so that the zoning chart on the most recent version of the A&R plan uses the correct dimensional requirements from table 4.2.4.
And I'll mention, I think there was one other change because I was trying to see which original lot was street number 61, which was street number 65. And I think on the latest version, that has been made more clear.
The structure that's to be raised is to be demolished is 65 Rosemary. On this plan, it's shown in a little bit lighter outline. And, but inside the structure that's to be demolished, it says number 65.
Yes, thank you. Are there any other questions? Then are we ready? Oh, I asked about zoning on noncompliance, but it certainly appears from the table and from the plan that each of the new lots do have the necessary frontage, the key issue in endorsing a plan subdivision approval not required. And that is correct, Ms. Newman, right?
That is correct. They have the minimum required within the district.
Does somebody want to make a motion to endorse the plan subdivision approval not required?
So move.
Second.
So Mr. Block had moved and Mr. Alpert second. And now I'll call for a vote. Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
And the chair is yes, so that is, plan is to be endorsed. And the vote was unanimous. And we will make arrangements for getting it signed in a few days after the meeting.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank the board again and the board's administrative staff for patience in getting these various issues corrected. Also, if I may, on behalf of Christ Church, its parishioners and its vestry and rector, thank you very much for approving our plan. And we appreciate your interest and your help in all of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
All right. So our next agenda item is to approve a decision. We already had enclosed the hearing on an amendment to Major Project Site Plan Review, number 2008-08, the applicant being V.S.A.L.L.C. And this is for property located at 225 Highland Avenue in Needham. And it was to, it is to allow occupancy of a portion of that building by a preschool, The Learning Tree Preschool, Inc. So I suppose all of the members have seen the latest revised version. And if you, and that was only sent out this afternoon. But the revised version was sent out several days ago. And only a couple of very minor changes were made in a further revised decision. So are there any questions about the decision, the changes?
Not for me.
All right, all right. Then I would look for a motion that what we're doing here is we're amending a decision. So let me just get to the granting clause here.
Lee or Alex, can you refresh our memory? Did we?
Yeah, page 5 has the granting clause if somebody wants to make a motion.
Did we close the hearing last time? And did we vote to grant the relief or?
No, we closed the hearing, but we took up no votes to grant the relief nor approve the decision.
Oh, thank you for the reminder. So we actually need a motion first to grant the relief and then to approve the decision.
Then I will make that motion, Madam Chair, if you will allow me to.
Yes.
I move that the board approve the Major Project Site Plan Special Permit Amendment under Section 7.4 of the Needham Zoning Bylaw and Section 4.2 of the Major Project Special Permit, number 2008-08, dated November 12, 2008, which has previously been amended October 11, 2009, January 4, 2011, August 9, 2011, and June 12, 2012. And I move that we allow the requested special permit under Section 5.1.1.5 of the bylaw to further waive strict adherence with the requirements of Section 5.1.2, required parking, subject to and with the benefit of the plan modifications, conditions, and limitations as set forth in the decision.
I second the motion.
And I just want to comment to our staff that the draft decision set has an anticipated vote that included five members of the board. And so that will need to be changed to reflect that Mr. Owens is not here tonight.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to. So we have a motion and a second to to approve the grant of relief. I'll call for a vote. Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
And the chair is yes. So that is approved unanimously by the four members present. And now we come to the decision. So I ask for a motion. If you wish to further discuss the decision before making a motion, open to that.
No, Madam Chair, I move that we accept the decision as presented in our packets and in the meeting packets that was posted with with the modifications that were made and presented to us this afternoon.
Okay.
Okay. The motion has been made by Mr. Albert, seconded by Mr. Jacobs. And so now we put it to a vote. Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
And the chair is yes. So that just is so the decision is approved unanimously by the four members present. And again, we will endeavor to get that signed in the next few days. All right, I think that takes care of that. Agenda item. So we'll be moving on to our hearings. So the first. So our next agenda item is the public hearing for 390 Grove Street definitive subdivision amendment.
Madam Chair.
Excuse me, the agenda says subdivision amendment, but Ms. Newman, is that an amendment or is that just definitive subdivision on 390 Grove Street?
It's a it's a definitive subdivision.
Yeah, it's not an amendment. So. Okay.
Madam Chair, I move that we waive the reading of the notice.
Thank you. Second. All right, we'll take a vote on waiving the reading of the notice. Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
And the chair is yes. So we have waived the reading of the notice for 390 Grove Street. Now does just one sec, I'm looking for here. And does does Mr. Jenta wish to speak at this time in on behalf of the petitioners?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do just a few comments, given that it's been so long since this has been before the board. If I may?
Yes.
George Jenta, Jr., representing the owner Elizabeth Schmidt Schuber, who's the applicant on this petition. And I mentioned, it's been a long time. We actually, this has actually not been before the board since February 18. It's been that long. We were originally scheduled for a continued hearing on March 19. But due to COVID and the shutdown of the town offices, that was obviously put off. And we've been circling circling ever since. And now here we are picking back up again quite a bit later. So so given that it's been that long, I just want to do a quick refresh as to the basics. Just to just so everybody knows remembers what this is about and where we left off. So basically, it's a it's a over five acre parcel on Grove Street that has an existing single family house on it. The owner desires to add one new home, and to do that, they need to subdivide the lot. And to subdivide the lot, they need to put a road in. It's our position that you can put a road in as of right. And that on the under an as of right situation, you would need 24 feet wide pavement with essentially a sea of pavement at the circle at the end, and none of that seems to make make any logical sense for just a single new home. So therefore, we did a plan that is a reduced width road, only 18 feet instead of the 24. A modified circle at the end that is we feel more attractive, less it has less of an impact, that works better overall. It is more appropriate in the in scale relative to having just one new home. At the last hearing on February 18, the board, we discussed several different things. And some of the things we discussed had to do with landscaping along the property lines, trees along the property lines, possibility of shifting the the pavement within the road layout. The easement that was located at the rear of lot two, location of filter mitt and a few other things. After the hearing of February 18, the plans were revised, and those plans were submitted at some point in early March, mid-March, prior to the rescheduled hearing date. And the board has had those for some time. And so that's kind of where we are. And those revised plans made a few changes, and I'm just going to call those call it the significant ones briefly. And that is that the filter mitt around along the north and south property lines was moved to within one foot of the property line. So it's basically right at the property line. The roadway with a pavement within the right of way was shifted two feet to the south so that the butter to the north now has 13 feet of space between the roadway and the property line. Trees to be protected and trees that were being removed have been identified on the plan. Let's see, there are a couple of minor type of typo changes or cleanup changes. Landscaping was was added, and we looked at pivoting the road, which was one of the things that was discussed or pivoting the circle. But in looking at doing that, and the goal was to try and save some trees. But in doing that, we saved one tree, but we ended up losing two more. So it didn't make sense to do that. So we kept the sort of the orientation of the circle at the end the same and just simply slid the road over. So so we think we've addressed the issues that were raised at the last hearing and therefore think we're in good shape. Now, I do want to just quickly, actually, I'll leave it at that. And I know that the butters have some comments, and we do have a rebuttal to that, but I'll let them present their case first.
Yes, but before we get to the comments by the butters, I do wish to mention that we have two new comments by town officials. We had several and prior to the prior hearings on this subject, and I won't repeat those. They're already in the minutes. But we got dated July 16, an email to Assistant Planner Alexander Klee from Dennis Condon, Fire Chief of the Fire Department, saying the fire has no issues with this plan. So we have that. And then we have an email from Town Engineer Anthony Delgazo, Delgazo, excuse me, to Alexander Klee and to Planning Director Lee Newman. And and this is what he says, "The proposed covert pipe under the driveway for lot one does not agree with the grading plan. The inverts don't work. The pipe is also indicated to be eight inches DI. That must mean diameter. It must be 12 inches minimum or a covert headwater depth calculations must be submitted along with a regular cleaning maintenance schedule." So Mr. Jenta, have you or particularly have you seen this email from Mr. Delgazo?
I have, and in fact, I forwarded along to our project engineer. And he's, I believe he's actually already addressed that on the plan on the plans and done a revised sheet to correct that.
All right. He already has made changes to the plan?
Yes, we, yes, we have not submitted them, but we've but the we've already we're we sort of we're holding holding them in case we have to make some more changes as well. But 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 those comments were addressed in a in a revision that we have, and we're happy to submit that. But as I said, I anticipate further revision, so figured we'd hold it for that.
Okay. So I have also several newsletters from nearby property owners. And I'm supposing this is the time to refer to those submissions. And I'll leave the lengthy letter from an attorney to the end. But shall I go ahead and mention those nearby property owner comments or written submissions that have come to us? Let's see. The one that's accompanied by an attorney's letter is from a certain individual, and I'm waiting on that. And then so they're they're identically worded statements labeled petition in opposition to 390 Grove Street subdivision. And this is how they're worded. As a resident of Needham's historic Grove Street neighborhood, the undersigned hereby opposes the proposed two lot subdivision located at 390 Grove Street Needham Mass, the proposed subdivision. The proposed subdivision is inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood and by creating a slippery slope for additional subdivisions on narrow and undersized lots could tarnish the bucolic nature of one of Needham's most historic neighborhoods. The planning board should should disapprove the definitive subdivision application. And I'll read the names of those who have signed it and their addresses. James Freitas, and he also submitted a handwritten note having a certain making some additional points to back it up. And his additional note is dated July 9, 2020, presumably addressed to the planning board, although that's not clear.
What was that addressed, Jean?
It was not addressed. It may have been addressed to somebody who was doing the organizing the petition because it says.
I'm asking what address he's.
Oh, excuse me, I should have said so. Oh, 471 and 465 Grove Street.
Thank you.
Thanks for reminding me to say that. And the next is Jean McGlynn of 359 Grove Street, same petition. The next, Robert Svenson, 447 Grove Street. Fred Ledley and tomorrow Ledley, 4333 Grove Street. Sandy Gettis and H. P. Gettis, 461 Grove Street. James Hurley, 381 Grove Street.
Mark? 381 or 380?
380. Oh, excuse me, 380 Grove Street. Mark Warren and Victoria Bender Ivan at 370 Grove Street. Wendy Evard Lane at 348 Grove Street. Robert Badavis and Caliopi Badavis at 402 Grove Street. Jane O'Brien, 430 Grove Street. And those were the petitions. Some other some others came in by email. An email from Robert Stetson dated July 21, addressed to Alexandra Klee saying Attorney Gary Leland Thall and Engineer Carlos Skulte will be presenting tonight on behalf of the butters. I see. And he refers to certain plans that he wishes to have presented to us. So that's that communication. And then we were provided with a letter from the attorney that is just referenced in that email. Attorney Gary Leland Thall of the law firm Berncov Goodman, L. C. And I understand that Mr. Leland Thall wishes to be allowed to appear and and actually speak and show perhaps show some some plans and that he will be allowed to do so. He he also engaged a civil engineer as a supplement to his letter. In that civil engineer, this letter dated July 14, 2020, addressed to Robert Stetson. Robert Stetson, I think, is a property owner, but the address is given as Berncov Goodman. Perhaps he is with that firm also. But anyway, this is Civil and Environmental Consultants Inc. The two persons signing the letter are Carlos Skulte, S. K. U. L. T. E. And Amy Knight, both professional engineers. Perhaps that will be part of Mr. Leland Thall's presentation. So I think I've identified everyone who has recently submitted. There were submissions prior to our February 18 hearing and prior to our February 4 hearing that are already in the record. So I think Alex Klee was going to set up so that Mr. Leland Thall could speak. Can that be arranged? Should that be arranged now?
Um. Sure, I need to know. I'm not sure of a person who wants to speak. So maybe whoever does could raise their hand, and then I can make you a panelist so that you can. Oh, it is Gary. Okay. So let me see here. I'm going to promote you, Gary, to be a panelist, which means that your audio and video will come up, I think. Are you there now, Gary? I think you need to manually unmute and unvideo yourself.
I have. Thank you.
You're welcome. There you are.
Thank you. If I may be permitted to proceed, or if you have any business before I do, please let me know.
No, you may go forward at this time, and then we turn to the planning. I mean, usually our our procedure, I should have said, is to have the presenter present, and that was Mr. Jenta. Have the planning board make comments and questions. And perhaps I should back up and ask any planning board member that wish to make comments and questions at this time. Or if they would just be soon hear from Mr. Leland Thall at this time. Mr. Albert, what? Any comments at this time?
Yeah, I I will have comments and questions, but they're all based on Mr. Lillian Thall's letter. And so I certainly want to hear what Attorney Lillian Thall has to say before I raise those questions and comments. So so I would prefer that he proceed at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Jacobs, is that the same? Or do you have anything you want to?
I agree. In this case, I think it makes sense to proceed in that fashion. Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Block, any any questions or comments at this time before we move forward?
Not at this time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, then then we'll move to the presentation by Mr. Lillian Thall.
Good evening, members of the board and the planning department. My name is Gary Lillian Thall. As the chair said, I am an attorney with Berncov Goodman. And we specifically represent James Curley, Dominic Colasacco, and Robert Badavis of Grove Street. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to make our comments this evening. The chair has introduced a good part of what we intend to talk about. The chair has introduced a good part of what we intend to talk about, and I appreciate that. At this point, I would like to ask Ms. Clea if she could let Carlos Schulte into the meeting, Sculte, I'm sorry, into the meeting. Because he is the engineer who's going to make part of our presentation. And I do promise the board that the presentation will be relatively to the amount of materials we have brief.
Yes, I, I am supposing that the board members would, would like to hear from the engineer as well.
Yes, so first of all, at the outset, I'd like to tell you, as you've said, our, our clients opposed the subdivision application and the request for waivers on a number of reasons. Before I start, I wanted to point out that there were some plans sent to the board this evening. They were sent later than we had hoped they would be. And the only purpose for these plans are to help you walk through and visually see the engineer's presentation. There's no new information in there in terms of the plans themselves. We use the applicant's plans. The engineer has just noted comments on those plans. And I believe everybody on the board, the planning department, and Mr. Junta were, were provided with those plans. I'd like to apologize to Ms. Clea for the late arrival of those plans, and I thank you for your indulgence on that.
Mr. Lillenthal, I just want to comment, they did come in very late, so it may be that some of the planning board members have not seen them. Is it possible for you to show your plans on the screen as you speak?
Mr. Sculte will do that, Madam Chair. So, and, and it was intended so that you wouldn't have to be distracted to the screen. If anybody doesn't have it, they can look at the screen. It's no different than if we put a whiteboard up at a, at a physical meeting. So, okay. We, what I'm going to do is allow Mr. Sculte to go through his engineering review and explain to the board the basis on which we believe this plan is deficient and the waivers should not be granted. And then what I would like to do is come back and briefly summarize those points and give you some of the legal aspects for which we believe disapproval is appropriate. I will not read or, or repeat to any extreme what's in my letter. And we, of course, would welcome any questions by the board. So with that, I would turn it over to Carlos Sculte. And then when he's done, I'd like to come back to present the summary.
Very good, members of the board. Carlos Sculte with Civil and Environmental Consultants. Can everybody hear me okay? Very good. Let me share my screen as Attorney Lillenthal mentioned earlier. We provided some information earlier today, which is basically just a markup of the applicant submitted plans. Just walking through some of the items that we noted in the memorandum that was attached to the letter drafted by Attorney Lillenthal and Stetson. So walking through them, just the first plan you see on the screen here, can everybody see this? Is the, the as of right plan that was submitted as part of the application. And, and one of, one of the things we saw here was that there were no meets and bounds or information really demonstrating how this plan complied with the by right requirements. So we recreated it based on the meets and bounds on the remainder of the plans and the plan set. And, and one of the, the things that jumped out to us was the, the fact that the lot closest to Grove Street didn't actually meet the lot width requirements if it were viewed as a corner lot. And, and I think that's one of the main things that, that we noticed here was that there appeared to be a, a small sliver of land, a parcel that was created here along the frontage. I'm not sure if there's a specific purpose for that parcel other than just to separate the, the main lot from Grove Street. And I think that's an important point because the corner lot designation of that parcel essentially dictates a eight hundred twenty foot minimum lot width requirement. And the entire lot, based on our measurements, would not meet that requirement, it would fall short. So absent the creation of that parcel on the front, the by right plan wouldn't actually meet the lot width requirement if it were viewed as a corner lot. One of the other things that, that didn't appear to comply with this plan was the, the lot itself that was created fell shy of the forty three thousand five hundred sixty square foot requirement based on our measurements on the recreation. I believe that the number came to around forty two thousand square feet. So again, it didn't appear to actually comply with the requirements were what would typically be required for an as of right plan. One of, one of the other things too is there's a number of trees along the property line. I shared with Mr. Curley here at three hundred eighty. And they're pretty significant trees. And I think that's something that needs to be considered and looked at in a little more detail as to whether or not these trees will continue to survive with the excavation, the utilities work that would be required within the roadway adjacent to the lot line there. So I, I think an evaluation of the viability of those trees is something that needs to be looked at in more detail. So moving to the next plan here, there's, there's a few things that we saw in our review here that didn't appear to, to meet the requirements here. One of the main ones was that there was a number of test pits that were dug in the central portion of the site here. The problem is the main infiltration system that's proposed for the subdivisions, more than two hundred feet away horizontally. And it's ten feet vertically lower than the majority of the area where the test pitting was performed. So there were a, a number of assumptions and extrapolation of groundwater and soil data that needed to be essentially made in order to design this system. So there actually is no soil testing or evaluation in the footprint of where the actual proposed system is located. And then from what we've also been told in the budding properties, that the soil on the Butters has been identified to be, you know, a lot more clay and silty than the soils that were observed in the central portion of the site here. So based on that information, we're, we're not entirely confident that it'd be consistent and uniform across the site. That would essentially be able to allow the system to be designed as the assumed information is portrayed for the soil conditions in the groundwater. One of the other issues here that we're looking at was the exiting turning movement from the subdivision roadway has a very tight radius, it's an eight foot radius as opposed to a twenty foot radius, which is on the south side of the road here. So what essentially that does is for any sort of larger vehicle, whether it's fire trucks or box trucks, even Amazon delivery truck or otherwise, they would have to make a, a larger sweeping turning movement out onto Grove Street in order to make that tight radius. Whereas if there were a larger radius, you'd be able to hug the corner a little bit more and stay closer to the street without swinging into oncoming traffic. And we did include a turning movement exhibit in our letter, which was attached separately. We don't have the exhibit up on the screen right now. One of the other inconsistencies that we saw, that I, I think the, the applicant's attorney touched on earlier today, was that the, that parkway here shown as thirteen feet on the plan. On the detail sheets, it's, it's shown as eleven. So that was something that we didn't quite understand what, what exactly was being proposed, because the plans didn't correlate across the various details. So I think that's something that needs to be confirmed and looked at to see exactly what is being proposed in that location. One of the test pits was also identified as having trash. So, so we'd be curious to hear the applicant or their attorney's opinion on what exactly that trash was. If it's anything that is of environmental concern, that either the town or, or the Butters should be aware of. That would need to be addressed during construction as well. I think that's an open question, if you don't have an answer to. One of the things here on the plan and profile sheet here, that says the infiltration system, nasty piece stormwater handbook, there's minimum setback requirements for these systems. This particular system, although there's no dimensions provided, appears not to meet those requirements. So we recommend that that be reviewed in more detail to, to see if they do in fact comply and what could be done about that to design it in a way that did comply with all the applicable regulations. And then one of the other items that's mentioned in, in the zoning regulations where, or the subdivision bylaws, I'm sorry, is a requirement for a level area of fifty feet, no more than one percent from the connection to the roadway. In this case, that's one of the waivers that's being requested. And, and that specifically identifies the need for, for safety as, as the measure for which that fifty foot level area should be provided. And, and I think that's an instance compounded with a tight radio here where it, it's a waiver that's being requested and there's vehicles that need to make wide turns here. And, and there's also a fairly steep grade, it's not terrible at, at three percent and a little bit more, but it, it's closer, closer to the intersection, there's a waiver being required, not only for the roadway width, but also for the slope approaching the intersection here as well. So there, there's a number of things that are, are adding up here for the waivers that are being requested. One of the other items that, that we saw in the reviews, that the outlet from the stormwater management system was identified to be above the actual chambers of the system, which really can't be constructed feasibly. So I think that's something that needs to be reviewed to make sure that the analysis and the design is consistent and it actually works as the applicant's engineer intends it to. And then I think on the next page here, I think there was a few things that we saw in the, in the drainage analysis, I think are worth noting and looking at in a little more detail. In that there's, you know, there's off-site portions here, which based on the limited amount of contours would, would appear to, at a minimum, at least drain along, not into the property here. So I think there needs to be a, a deeper look that gets applied to the adjacent Curley property here at three eighty. Identify whether or not that the property does in fact drain into the roadway, which will drain into the catch basin, which will drain into the infiltration system, potentially adding more flow than it's designed to, impacting the performance there. And also, it, it appeared that based on the swale that's proposed on the southern east side of the roadway and the contours that are proposed, that, that a fairly substantial portion of this is turning area would in fact drain to that swale and in turn into this drainage system as well. And at the same time, all these off-site flows will potentially be coming into the roadway. Roadways elevated closer to the street in order to propose the grains that are shown on the plan and profile sheets, which effectively eliminates the existing conditions of the, the flow coming across in this direction. It, it essentially channelizes it along the property here where there'd be a somewhat concentrated flow out onto Grove Street at this location as well. And, and one of the things that, that's worth noting is that this project's an aquifer protection area. And the applicants identified on the plans that there's some water quality measures to be included in form of a water quality unit, I believe it's a storm scepter, STC nine hundred. But it was unclear on the plans of where that was proposed, in, in that it was identified as a detail. It wasn't mentioned in the stormwater report, and it wasn't actually shown on the plans as to where it would be. So I think those are through the major things that we saw through, through our review. Again, it's a, it's a brief summary of the information that was included in our memorandum. And, and I'm happy to ask, answer any questions you may have, but I'd also like to turn it back to Attorney Lillenthal just to, to close out the applicant's position, the Butters' position.
Thank you, Mr. Sculte.
Here we go, I'm trying to unmute myself, thank you. Thank you, Carlos. I believe Carlos has indicated a number of bases on which this plan should, should fail, both in terms of, of entitling to as a right subdivision approval and as, as entitled to waivers which make it buildable. I, I think this is a case where the waivers would not benefit the community to any extent and would only benefit the, the applicant and the people who would construct residences within the subdivision. I'd like to note that there is an existing, as, as Mr. Junta said, existing single family house systems, a valuable single family lot in a neighborhood with a number of valuable single family lots. It's a historic neighborhood, I've traveled it many times, as I'm sure have all of you. I'd also like to note, and thank you, Madam Chair, for, for acknowledging the petitions. There were people who were very interested in, in, in this. And those people, I believe there are eleven of them, I'm not sure I have the exact count at this time. But they are the owners of over thirty acres of land in this neighborhood. And as you may have noted, these are all addresses which are relatively close to the subject property. I think when, when the board has asked for waivers, they, they should look to the benefit to the public. I, I see no benefit to, to the public other than, you know, the usual kinds of, of reasons that applicants give for, for benefits to the public. I think there are many, as outlined by Mr. Sculte, detriments to the public. And I, I would just like to summarize and then end with the most important, I think, point on this, on this property. I think that Mr. Sculte has pointed out through the use of the plans that the, the lot on an as of right basis would be deficient in square footage by over a thousand feet. And that would not entitle it, as we see it, to an as of right approval. I would also like to note that the, that the plans are deficient in terms of, of measurements and, and, and other items, which I know the planning department would, if this was an as of right definitive submission would require. The plan, as been pointed out by the engineering department of the town and by Mr. Sculte, is inadequate in terms of stormwater drainage. And I'd like to point out also that this property falls in the Needham Aquifer Protection Overlay District as well as the Massachusetts Storm Water Control Standard and Regulations Areas. We believe the drainage is, has been improperly and inadequately calculated. It will be a problem for the environment, as, as Mr. Sculte, Sculte has shown. Mr. Sculte has pointed out, and I would reiterate, the problems with the subdivision road and the access onto Grove Street. I would be worried about ice there in the winter, I would be worried about turning radiuses. And, and especially the, you know, the bucolic country nature of that, that street. Mr. Sculte, also, Sculte also pointed out sidewalk issues and the parkway issues. I would like to note that there are significant older mature trees on the property line with Mr. Curley. I know the plan said Ahern, I believe that's Mr. Curley's property. But in any event, it's on the property line of the Butters, work in that area. And if a sidewalk were to be placed in that area, which would then create another problem for the, for the subdivision lot, that would result in the death of mature, important trees. The applicant, by its request for waivers, is asking for the board to make an unfeasible subdivision feasible. We, we believe that this would also set an inappropriate precedent, as, as stated in the petitions. And it's been a while since I saw one of those, I'm glad it was stated, that taking lots that were divided into a, a neighborhood which is intended to have the, the culture, nature, and character of the Grove Street area, there would be an incentive through the use of waivers to divide that. And, and to, you know, kind of shoehorn lots into Needham, which I know the town values its, its historic neighborhoods. Last, and certainly by no means least, I'd like to briefly discuss what Mr. Sculte, Sculte referred to as parcel A. On your plan, you can see that there are lots one and two, and then there's something which I personally don't understand. Well, I do understand it, but I don't understand it from the subdivision point of view and the land use point of view as parcel A. I'd like to point out at the start, the parcel A seems to be used for, for the infiltration system and for chambers. But the applicant would have the board believe that parcel A is not part of the subdivision. Because if it was, similar to the doctrine of merger with checker boarding of lots, parcel A is in the same ownership. And there's no reasonable explanation for having parcel A other than to avoid the application of the lot width requirements for a corner lot to this subdivision. I believe on that basis alone, this subdivision should. I believe on that basis alone, this subdivision should be rejected. I understand what the applicant has done here. I give them good marks for creativity, but it doesn't work. It's a fiction, and it's a fiction that should not be encouraged. The dimensional width requirement is a zoning bylaw requirement, and it should be honored and respected. There are methods for getting that waived, but I don't think that's appropriate to be in consideration here. So with that, I will, I have cut short my presentation for the sake of brevity. I think we've gotten everything in. I think absent of a byright plan and in light of the other deficiencies that we've pointed out, we would respectfully request that the board close the hearing and reject the plan and the waivers. And I thank you very much for your time and patience in this interesting and challenging environment. It's a pleasure to be before you in this very new way.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Lilian Dahl. I would like to give the planning board members an opportunity to ask questions and comment. I also will want to give Mr. Jenta and perhaps the applicant's engineer an opportunity to respond. It's possible that we will want to continue this hearing in order to adequately address some of these issues. But first, why don't I see what questions or comments the planning board members have at this time, either for Mr. Jenta or for Mr., both of them attorneys, of course, Attorney Jenta and Attorney Lilian Dahl. Mr. Albert?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm going to limit my questions and my comments to the technical aspects that are being raised by Attorney Lilian Dahl and Mr. Sculte. And even though I have my thoughts on the more general aesthetic objections to having a subdivision here, I don't know that they need to be addressed at this time or appropriately address them. The first thing that I want to comment and question is the issue of whether the applicant has in fact presented an as-of-right type of subdivision, which the opponents, the abutters claim they have not successfully done. So I believe there are two elements to that. One is that lot 1 is less than 1 acre, where the proponents show it as being greater than an acre. Mr. Sculte states that an actual measurement that he has done shows it as being less than an acre. On that regard, my first question for Mr. Sculte is, is that measurement with lot A being excluded, and because Ms. Lilian Dahl is claiming that lot A is really part of lot 1, if that's the measurement and you included lot A, it seems to me that you're now over an acre. And so, you know, you can't have it both ways. And my comment on it is that there's plenty of land on lot 2 that could be added to lot 1, that if in fact it's undersized by acreage, I think that that could be remedied by just shifting some square footage from lot 2 to lot 1. But I'm more concerned about the 120-foot frontage requirement that Mr. Lilian Dahl I think I understand his position that carving out lot A was to avoid this lot 1 having frontage on Grove Street and therefore having, not being able to meet that requirement. And so the first thing that I'd like to point out to the representatives of the abutters is that that 120-foot requirement is not required for the entire lot. It is only required through the rear of a proposed building. So if the proponents could show that there is 120-foot width to where they could place a building on lot 1, then they've met that requirement. But then my question for Mr. Junta is, other than preventing frontage on Grove Street, what's the reason for having lot A? Is there a reason for segregating that lot out other than Mr. Lilian Dahl's assertion that it's to prevent the 120-foot width requirement? So I'd like to address those because I'm very concerned about whether the applicant has in fact been able to meet the requirement. I want to point out in that regard that it's clear from the lots, from the plans, that because of the radius of the roadway on the south side, if in fact the lot 1 does extend and have frontage on Grove Street, it's less than 120 feet right on Grove Street. And so my question, that I believe is probably best to be addressed to our building inspector, Mr. Roach, is would that be measured to that jut out at the intersection of Grove Street? Or could it be measured to the 40 feet of the width of the proposed private road? Because if it did that, I believe it would be more than 120 feet. So the only other comments then that I want to make, shifting to the roadway and the engineering objections that Mr. Sculte raised, is that first, I don't recall seeing an email from the chief of police approving this. So in terms of the safety aspects that are being raised, I would like to go back to the chief of police and the fire chief and ask them whether they are still approving this. And on the infiltration and the stormwater management, I would like to go back to the town engineer and ask him to look at the objections that are being raised and ask whether he agrees with the abutters' assertions or whether he does not see them as being as much of a problem. So those are my comments on that, basically asking for more information in the future. But I have my questions on the acreage and the lot width in order to determine whether in fact the proponents can present an as-of-right subdivision.
Before we turn to Mr. Jenta to respond to Mr. Albert, perhaps it would be good to get questions from other board members so that we have all the questions on the table, questions or comments. So, Mr. Jacobs, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
Yeah, I'll add one or two to what Mr. Albert has thrown out there, all of which are live issues with me too. There's been a lot of mention by Attorney Lilian Dahl and his clients and other objectors that revolving around the fact that this is a historic neighborhood. So I'd like someone from Attorney Lilian Dahl's side, probably Attorney Lilian Dahl himself, to tell me, how is it a historic neighborhood? And what do we make of that? What does the planning board do with the fact if we find that it is a historic neighborhood in some significant sense? Does that mean that we have to be hypersensitive to a proposed subdivision? Does it make any difference to us? So I'd like to hear something about that. And maybe, up to you, of course, Madam Chairman, maybe you want to ask Attorney Lilian Dahl to comment on that before we go back to the applicant, your call. But those are the questions I would add to what Mr. Albert has already put on the table.
All right. Maybe it would be a good idea, because that's a very discreet question. Mr. Lilian Dahl, what do the objectors who've referred to this as an historic neighborhood, what do they mean by that?
Thank you for that question, actually. It gives me a chance to expand on that a little bit, but not a lot. I don't mean historic in the sense of it's designated a historic district, and I think we all know that. When I, and as I said, over my 30 years of living right next to Needham, I've driven that road many, many times, and it's the character of that neighborhood, the maturity of that neighborhood, the tone it sets for the town of Needham. I think it's a tone that Needham values. Never having lived there, I take a little bit of liberty in saying that, but as many of you know, I've done a lot of work in the town of Needham over the years and known people there for many years. It's a feeling that the abutters expressed to me when I talked with them, I wish I could say met with them, but that's not the way it goes these days. And when I talked with them, they just said it's a feeling, it's a character, and that's what brought so many people out to join in this petition. If there were a complete as-of-right development here, I believe the abutters understand that that's the way it is. And I think the board does have some discretion in maintaining the character of neighborhoods, but that's obviously within the subdivision control and the subdivision rules and regulations. But I think this area of a number of areas in the town of Needham is of such a character and such a mature, and I'll use the word in the definition, historic nature over the years, that it's something that really the neighbors, and I believe the town, would want to preserve. It's a wonderful feeling I got when I used to drive in there just on a Sunday afternoon. And so that would be my definition, Mr. Block.
All right.
Jacobs, whoever asked the question.
Can I just follow up on that? Just, I just want to be crystal clear on what we're talking about here. There's no question that Grove Street is a beautiful street. Yeah, it's inarguable. But you use the word mature twice. And by that do you mean that the homes in the area have all been there for many years? Because that's clearly not true.
Maybe established is a better word than mature. I might use those words interchangeably, but, you know, there aren't any large parcels that, from what I understand of the area, and I've looked at it on Google Earth, and I know people who live in the area, as a matter of fact, one of my former law partners lives in that area. You know, there's no large parcels that are going to be, you know, coming online for development that would affect the character of that neighborhood. This proposal will affect the character of that neighborhood. One can argue, you know, ratios, proportions, miniscularity, but I think every change has a ripple effect. And in this neighborhood, I believe the ripple effects are very deep. And that's why we are so opposed, and for very, very good reasons, to the change that would result from this neighborhood. And that's why I mentioned people who are objecting to this, own 30 acres of, over 30 acres of land in that area. You know, if this isn't as-of-right subdivision, then, you know, you put your tail between your legs and maybe you hope that the board will do whatever it can to protect the character of the neighborhood, but we understand the law is the law. In this case, and I repeat for important punctuation on this, we don't believe that there is the right to build, the ability to build an as-of-right subdivision. And with respect to Mr. Albert's comments, which I'll not respond to until asked to or ask Mr. Sculte to, we believe that if you recognize what parcel A is, and Mr. Junta, I'm sure will have something to say about that, and recognize the lot width requirement, I'm looking at a plan right here, which I don't believe, and I'll leave this to Mr. Sculte, has 120-foot width where it needs to. And so I'll look forward to responding to that or having Mr. Sculte respond to it.
Right. Before turning to Mr. Jenta, oh, and also I'd like to hear from Mr. Block, just to make sure every member has had an opportunity. But I do want to respond quickly to Mr. Jacobs' question about the response from the police department. Now, this response was to the original iteration of the plans, and changes were made as a result of the February hearings in response to other comments, you know, changes were made to move the roadway away from a lot line and landscaping changes were made. But I don't think any changes were made to the turning radius or the apron, I guess you might call it, the entrance, which is probably what is being referred to when we speak of safety. And it's a very brief memo email from John Schlittler, our police chief. He is our police chief, right? Yes, or is he?
Yes.
I think he is police chief. And it says, hi there, I mean, excuse me. That was Alex's email to him, but his response is, police has no issues. So very similar to the more recent response we've got from the fire department. The fire department has no issues. The police department had no issues back on January 30th. So I just wanted to make sure you knew that. Now, okay, Mr. Block?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, as the newest member to the board, I'm trying to find a balance between, you know, several factors, which is a board we have to determine, and this is a conversation that we'll, you know, I'm sure have offline. On the one hand, when is it appropriate for waivers? At what point are we effectively waving away our subdivision regulations? That's one question that I'd like to get a little bit more clarity on among our board so we can apply them more consistently. Obviously, one area where we have to take a much closer look is any adverse impact the subdivision or a waiver of, or of a requested waiver would have on the property or an abutter. So one question that I have for Attorney Lilian Dahl is, in that, in the event the environment, the engineering questions raised by Mr. Sculte are cured, is there an adverse economic impact to the abutters or the people that you represent? And if so, how are we able to quantify that? I think that my colleagues, Mr. Jacobs and Mr. Albert, raise very good questions. I'm interested in hearing the, knowing the answers to those questions. Philosophically, I understand the comment that Attorney Lilian Dahl is making that there seems to be seems to be a consistent character along Grove Street. And we, I think our obligation is to look at these, these matters, these applications, both in and of themselves and also as a whole. And by, by saying that, I mean, if we, if we allow in one and set a precedent, what else do we create for the next 20 years along the street? If we have homes that are effectively stacked along one another, is that happening here? And does that change a certain consistency that may have been intended by the existing zoning requirements? I'm not saying that I necessarily oppose it in isolation, but I do wonder and have to question what long, longer term or medium term impact that has on some kind of character for a particular neighborhood and what's being intended by the, by the zoning bylaws. But we also have to take into, into account, for instance, if that, that second house, if it were approved, is so far away from the, from Grove Street, which I had an opportunity to drive today to get a little bit more familiar with that particular property, it's so far removed that you weren't, really wouldn't, you'd see a part, but only a part of that driveway or road. You, it would be, it's such a long distance away, it's almost, it's more than 50,000 feet away, sorry, that's wrong, 50,000 square feet away from, from Grove Street to be able to see the actual second house. So I would do want to be mindful of the actual characteristics of the street, of the immediate neighborhood, what impact and precedent we may be setting, and what harm is being actually raised by creating a subdivision. As a residential real estate, sales representative, as a Realtor, I'm mindful of some of these impacts, but some of these impacts are less meaningful than others. I will say that if an abutter otherwise has what appears to be a view of unending woods, and suddenly that that view is interrupted by a road, that there may be an impact. I don't know that we can quantify it economically, but there is something to be said of diminished demand, and that diminished demand has an impact on, on the ability to sell and the value to sell. So I, I'm mindful of all these elements. I have a, you know, the question, you know, the question for Attorney Lilienthal of any actual harm, economic harm that could come to any of the abutters, I'm very mindful and wonder about any of the environmental or other harm that comes to the abutters as a result of, of any fault in engineering. And yet I'm not entirely satisfied that what we've heard is enough evidence that there will be harm as a result of the engineering. So I need to look at this a little bit more thoroughly, Madam Chair, and have those questions. Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, what I, actually, what I'd like to do now is give Mr. Jynta an opportunity to respond, and particularly to address the issues that were raised, and the rather, the very particular issues that were raised by Mr. Alpert. And that has to do with, on the as-of-right plan that was presented, questions have been raised about whether that was truly as-of-right because it's asserted that Lot 1 is less than a one-acre minimum lot requirement. And is, is, is that true from Mr. Jynta's point of view? And then, as far as the Lot A, explaining the reasons why Lot A was created as a separate lot, it seems to be asserted that it was to avoid a lot width requirement for corner lots, but it could be there were other reasons for the creation of Lot A. And, all right, I, and then I think the other question having to do with historic neighborhood and so forth was more addressed to Mr. Blumenthal. So those are the questions for you, Mr. Jynta, and so I give you the floor.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. And actually, I'd like to start with that last item, the character of the neighborhood, and just touch on that briefly, because I certainly understand sort of what the, or I believe I understand what the neighbors are articulating, in that Grove Street is a very sort of rural street. It has lots that have substantial sizes, witness the fact that there's several people in opposition, yet it could, yet their land consists of 30 acres. So the only way you get to that is if the lots themselves are relatively large. And so that really is what defines the character of this neighborhood, is the large lot sizes or the low density. And to that extent, while, you know, that maybe contributes to the appearance and the character of a neighborhood, the reality is that doesn't have any impact for zoning. And in fact, there was a time when people in Needham, in the more rural parts of town, put together an effort to increase the zoning to create a two-acre district. However, that effort didn't go anywhere and it didn't pass town meeting. As a result, we have the one acre, you know, still throughout town, even in the rural residential conservation. So, you know, we have to look to zoning and what zoning provides, and in that case, it's acre lots in this area. It happens to be that a lot of the properties in this area are substantially larger, but, but that's not what the zoning is. So I just want to put that out there with respect to the character of the neighborhood, that it's really shorthand for large lots with low density. So now, but getting back to the more specific comments, and I'm going to, I'm going to address parcel A and the lot width first, and then I'll talk about the area. So parcel A, as was disclosed or discussed at, I think it was the last hearing, or maybe the hearing before that, was in fact created in part, in large part, to create a separation from Grove Street, so that it was, so that Lot 1 would not be a corner lot. Now, Attorney Lilienthal would say that, well, you can't do that, but I would say there's nothing at all in the zoning bylaw or in the general laws that say you can't. There's no prohibition whatsoever. The closest thing you get is the doctrine of infectious invalidity, which really wouldn't apply here, because that doctrine comes into play when you create a substandard lot and then subsequently try and build on it as a buildable lot. In this case, Lot, parcel A is designated on the plan, it would be approved as a non-buildable lot. With respect to the common ownership issues, that's sort of a red herring, because parcel A would be owned by a trust of the homeowners, this being a private way, the, there would be a homeowners association that would manage the roadway as well as the drainage improvements, just like the many other private ways that the planning board has approved over the last 10, 20 years. So parcel A would be held in separate ownership, there would be no merger for title, it would be a separate lot. Now, there's also a second thought, and at one point, the thought was to try and put the, the infiltration basin entirely within parcel A, but that would have actually forced the whole subdivision to get pushed further to the back, creating more impervious surface, and therefore, the thought was, rather than put the entire system in there, put a chunk of it in and do an easement to cover the rest of it. So, so that's the story with parcel A. Now, with parcel A carved out, Lot 1 is clearly not a corner lot. And where it is not a corner lot, the 120-foot lot width does not apply on that westerly bound, west, yeah, well, the Grove Street side. So, so therefore, that, there's no issue there. It clearly meets the 120 feet the other way, sort of parallel to the proposed roadway. So the, so the lot width is really not an issue. With respect to the lot area, this may be an area which we're a bit remiss, the, the lot on the plan clearly does not have an area, and that's, that's our bad. However, I will say, we had quite a few different iterations of the plan prior to submittal and even in the early days of submittal, and I can vouch, I know that there is a version that has sufficient area on it. And as the board, as I think it was Mr. Jacobs noted, you can easily adjust the size of Lot 1 by pushing the, the sort of interior lot line further up, and you can also adjust it by making parcel A a little bit smaller as well. So that's kind of a smokescreen issue in terms of the area for that lot. And, and along those lines, we're going to have to come back to you with a revised as-of-right plan to make it absolutely clear that that lot meets the requirement. And along those lines, I will say, one thing, we are in agreement. The whole, this whole thing, the request for all these waivers is predicated on an as-of-right. And we would only go forward, we would only have gone forward if we felt that we had an as-of-right. So we're sort of in agreement with the opponents in that if, if you can't do an as-of-right, it's a little bit of a different situation. But, so, so we believe that, that Lot 1 does in fact have the area. Parcel A is properly excluded from Lot 1 as a separate parcel to contain a chunk of the drain, the infiltration or drainage structure. And then there you have it.
I, as, as Chair, perhaps I'll take a turn to ask two questions that also have to do with the as-of-right, the ability to develop as-of-right. I believe it was asserted that, I know, as-of-right would require two sidewalks, and that if the two sidewalks went in, they, trees that are on, that whose trunks are actually on the property line would be disturbed, and that couldn't possibly be allowed, so therefore, that's not as-of-right. And so I, that's, that's one question. And the other is, when it comes to as-of-right, we also have the turning radius at the corner and the apron and the, and its grade. Did your as-of-right plan make changes to the turning radius and the apron to comply fully with the subdivision rules and regulations?
I'll have to defer to David Kelly on that. David, you want to chime in?
In the as-of-right plan, the pavement radius on the south and on the north are different. The one on the north is, as it's shown in the, I guess, the waiver plan.
Mr. Kelly, are you putting up something up on the screen, or are you frozen?
No.
That was the, that was your answer.
That's correct.
On the as-of-right plan, the as-of-right plan did show a different and complying turning radius. Is that correct?
The radius shown on the as-of-right plan for the asphalt are the same ones that are shown on the, quote, waiver request plan.
Okay, it's the same, okay, okay. Same as the waiver.
Madam Chair, would it help if I put the plans up on the screen?
Well, I think my question was answered, and
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Jynta, but it sounds like the as-of-right plan did not address the turning radius and the grade of the approach to the road to make that fully compliant with our subdivision rules and regulations. That's what I take it from Mr. Kelly's response.
Right. And I would say, so I think that's something we need to go back and take a look at, along with the, you know, making sure that there's the area there. One, yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
So I, I think, unless there's something, some further response that you want to make, Mr. Jynta, to, to Mr. Lilienthal's comments at this time, you have, I think, responded to the planning board members' questions. So I do want to give an opportunity to any persons who may be listening.
Madam Chair, may I, may I respond to some of the questions, which I was not given the chance to respond to, Mr. Blocks in particular?
Oh, yes, his question about character and
Well, that was Mr. Jacobs, and I think I responded to that, and I'm not, I'm not meaning to belabor it.
Yeah, you, you did respond to Mr. Jacobs regarding whether the neighborhood is historic and so, et cetera, but it's true, I, I didn't give you an opportunity to respond to Mr. Block.
So thank you. Mr. Block, you asked a great question, one that I struggled with when I was on your side of the table, and that is, when a waiver is appropriate? I think the, the answer that I got to over the years was that waivers are appropriate not to make a subdivision feasible, but when you take a subdivision that can be built, and usually, and oftentimes comes from the planning board itself, in saying on a, on a subdivision where waivers would, would enhance the benefit to the community, can you make this road narrower? Can you, can you do this? Can you make the cut less? And, and those kinds of waivers are strictly related to, to benefiting, and there will be some benefit to a developer. I'm not complaining about that. But to grant waivers, to make a plan developable in reality, is not the purpose, as I saw it, and as I see it as a land use attorney, in granting waivers. I think waivers are, as you mentioned, and I agree, a slippery slope. Somebody mentioned that this is an acre area and there are 30 acres of lot owners here. I mean, I would hate to say, and I, and I don't want to sound like a, a belligerent attorney, but that is our rap. You know, if, if the abutters saw this, some could get together, pull their back land and create another two or three lot subdivision. That's not what I think the planning board wants to encourage, although I don't suppose to, you know, to, to read your thoughts. I think I know this board well over the years. The other last thing is that I, I think it's a bit disingenuous, and I've known Mr. Jynta not a long time, but I've known his father for many decades. You know, while he's, while he's sincere, I think that there is no real factual basis for creating this parcel A, for a, for an HOA or a trust, for, you could, you could do a, a, a sharing agreement just in an easement, and I think he acknowledged that the only reason that parcel A was created was to avoid the, the corner lot and lot width requirements. And with that, I will thank the board and my comments, unless you have other questions.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Block.
The, the critical question really that I had for Attorney Lilienthal was a question about what harm may come from, may come directly to the abutters. If, if the engineering issues were cured and this was approved, what harm would come to the abutters?
And I think you put it in terms of quantifiable harm.
Correct. Or, yes, you know, this, assuming, for instance, that a tree on a, on a, on a property line was preserved, for instance.
Well, I think through the use of waivers, and I'm going to take that question to, to refer back to your original premise, through the use of waivers, you can address those things. As for harm, you know, I, I could only address harm that might come to me if I were in a butter in a neighborhood, sitting there, looking at what was happening. I don't, I'm not sure harm is, it's so subjective, and it's a very, one man's harm may be another man's benefit or a woman's benefit or, or something of that nature. But, I mean, I could conjecture harm, I mean, seeing a, a house in your, in your backyard where one was not present before. Seeing the character of your neighborhood changed through, through, you know, the use of, of manipulating the zoning bylaw through variances of the planning board, rules and regulations through waivers, that could, in, in concept, result in harm. Harm is so conceptual and so subjective that I can't really answer, I could give you a lot of hypotheticals, I suppose, from my point of view, but I will agree with Mr. Jynta on one thing. You know, if, if the subdivision control law allows by right a two-lot subdivision, if you eschew the char, the character and the, and the fiction of parcel A, then that is compliant with the law. And, and that is a harm, I suppose, you have to live with unless you find other reasons, compelling reasons, that the board should not grant an approval. The board, by its regulations, rules and regulations, and by, by, by the, by chapter 41, is, you know, has a, a roadmap, and, and we understand that that roadmap has to be followed. In this case, I think that the applicant has created a massive detour through the rules and regulations and the subdivision control law. Hope that responds.
Okay. Um.
In this case, I think that the applicant has created a massive detour through the rules and regulations and the subdivision control law. I hope that responds.
Okay. We're going to have to move forward here, and I know I, we have another hearing. I feel as though it's my responsibility to see if there are any persons who are here tuning in who wish to speak briefly. And I believe, Alex Cle, you said you would help with that?
Sure. Anyone who wishes to speak can raise their hand by pressing the little raised hand icon that they see. And I also wanted to say that I believe there's at least one person calling in by phone number. And the way to raise one's hand, quote-unquote, by phone number over Zoom is to press star nine. So we can give people a moment. I don't see anyone doing that right now.
And does that star nine, does that call go through to you, Alexander? And do you repeat the call, or does it actually go through so we hear the person?
I think that, I've never actually seen it in action, to be completely honest. But I think that what happens is it just alerts us that they wish to talk. And then I can allow their audio to come through, and then they would ask a question. But I don't see anybody raising their hands.
All right, then, I, I do think we are continuing this hearing. For one thing, I know that, I, I, I read the letter of our engineer regarding drainage issues. And Mr. Sculte brought up drainage issues that we will want to ask the town engineer about. So I, I, I expect that we will want to continue this hearing. Now.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to remind you that my questions, not only for the drainage issues and the stormwater issues of the town engineer, but I would like the police chief and the fire chief to examine the, the, the entrance of the private roadway onto Grove Street to make, because there, there are some serious safety issues that are being raised by the abutters. And I would like the fire chief and, and the police chief to take a second look at that and to see whether they still feel that they have no issues with the plan.
Yes, good, good reminder. So we, we want to seek the advice of the town engineer, the police chief, and the fire chief. And have that advice on whatever plan changes a result from that advice before us at the meeting that we, that we continue this hearing for. Now, Lee, Lee Newman, our planning director, what, what meeting would we continue this to? Would it be the August 11th, or would we have to go into September?
Well, we have, we have time on our August 11th meeting. If we want to continue it to August 11th, we could schedule this for eight o'clock on August the 11th.
Okay. Mr. Janta, does that work for you and your client?
It does.
Okay. Then, may I have a motion to continue this?
Madam Chair, Mr. Lilienthal, may I ask if, if that works for, it works for me, by the way, but I want to make sure it works for Mr. Sculte.
Oh, I should have asked, yes.
Okay.
And also.
Does August 11th at eight o'clock work for you?
Yep, looks like that should be fine.
Okay, and one more question procedurally. Does the board have sufficient time to make a decision under the deadline requirements? Continuing this to August 11th, or do you need a request for extension from the applicant?
Yeah, Ms. Newman usually advises us on that.
I should have known that.
I think we have an extension that goes out through the end of August.
Thank you, Lee.
Okay, and we, and that extension, that would require us to actually make a decision by the end of August. Is that right?
Two things kind of going on here. You've got the governor's order that automatically extends things, although we have been formalizing it, just so there's no ambiguity, by asking the applicant to formally request it. We've accepted it and filing it with the town clerk so that there is no ambiguity.
Well, with, even if we close a hearing on August 11th.
I think we, we still need a continuation. So it might be beneficial for us to get it, just so that we're all clear, if George is willing to grant it. And let's just move this right now clearly, if, out to the end of September. George, are you willing to grant that extension and get it to us in writing so that we can facilitate it?
Sure, no problem.
All right, so I think the, the motion only needs to be the extension of the hearing. Is that correct? Because we don't, we don't actually have the request in writing yet for the extension of the decision date. We couldn't decide that on August 11th, I guess, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, all right, then, we need a motion to continue the hearing.
They're moved.
All right.
Second.
Locke is moved and Mr.
Why do we have to do it in harmony?
And.
Practice.
Oh, let's vote. Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so that is being interspoled by the four present. So, thank you for your presentations. And we certainly will follow up with the town engineer and the police and fire chief. And see you all again on August 11th.
Thank you, members of the board.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right, it is now, see, I gotta get all these papers off my desk here and move to our next agenda item. Now, this, we don't, we didn't, we don't need to waive the hearing notice because this was a continued hearing, correct? We're, we're all set with that. Okay. So now we are moving on to the Heather Lane definitive subdivision. And we have a set of revised plans. We have some correspondence regarding the proposed conservation restriction. So, Mr. Smart, do you wish to make a presentation regarding the revised plans and the conservation restriction?
Yes, I do. Okay. Before you, our, our three related applications. The Heather Lane subdivision, which is six lots, Heather Lane extension subdivision, and a residential compound special permit, which would propose to divide Lot 4 of the Heather Lane subdivision into five residential compound lots. So the total number of residential lots proposed is 10, which is an increase from the five existing residences. You may recall that at the last meeting, three immediate abutters, the Jay family, the Grossman family, and the Hasiottis family emailed in letters of support. With me are William Pierceak, the principal landowner, and David Kelly and Brandon Lee of Kelly Engineering. So I'll provide a little bit of overview, and then David will talk a little bit more about the revised plans. Since the first public hearing in the middle of June, we had a, a site meeting on June 22nd with Mr. Brunner and Mr. Brown, who owned the abutting property at 770 Chestnut Street, to discuss the subdivision road layout, trees, and lighting. On June 30th, we filed substantially revised versions of the Homeowners Association declarations of trust, rest restrictive covenants, and subdivision covenants, and also utility and drainage easements. On July 13th, we filed revised plans, a proposed restrictive conservation restriction easement and related plan, and my, and my letter response to questions which were raised at the initial hearing. On, on July 15th, we met with, on site with Lee Newman, Gene McKnight, Paul Alpert, and Janet Bernardo and Deb Anderson from Conservation to walk the property and discuss the proposed conservation restriction and related matters. And on July 17th, I provided a letter to the board opposing a public landing spot or public access trail on the property. And we're hoping that at the end of this evening's meeting, you will vote to close the public hearing and vote to authorize the planning director to draft favorable decisions on the three applications. With regard to the, the various homeowner documents, restrictive covenants, and so forth, as I had said last time, these documents are modeled generally on the Riverbend subdivision documents, which were approved several years ago by the planning board. We have incorporated a requested change to call for joint and several responsibility of lot owners to perform maintenance and repair of the road and utilities. We've clarified that the five residential compound lot owners, whose rights in Heather Lane would be derivative of the rights of Lot 4 in the Heather Lane subdivision, will together have one-sixth voting right interest in a one-sixth share of the costs relating to Heather Lane and the related utilities. We've changed the list of owners since Mr. Pierceak, in, in, under a trust, has purchased the Malumian property. And we've, in general, we've, we've cleaned up those documents significantly from the, from the first iteration. I can go through those again if, if you want me to, but I, I think I described what those documents do last time. Oh, one other thing I wanted to mention is that I, I did have a communication with Paul Alpert on June 20th. And he suggested changes to the, the declarations of trust, both for Heather Lane and for Heather Lane Extension, relating to trustee successor language and regarding the number of trustee signatures required on certifications that all homeowner association charges have been paid, like a 6D certificate with condominium. So I've incorporated all of those requirements, or those, his suggestions. Now, in the past, my understanding is that the board has not voted on the exact text of the homeowner and covenant documents at the time they vote on a subdivision decision. Instead, the subdivision decisions state that the applicant is to deliver executed documents to the board, subject review and approval of the board prior to endorsement of the plan. Because if you think about it, you know, the documents can't really be finalized right now because they have to make reference to the decisions by the board. Okay. So moving on, in terms of, in, in terms of plan revisions, as I said, David Kelly will go over this in a little bit more detail. But for the Heather Lane subdivision, we submitted several revised plan sheets dated July 7th. We removed Ms. Malumian as an owner. We added an existing column to the waiver chart regarding compliance with subdivision rules and regulations, as Ted Owens had requested. And we added bearings and distances to the drainage easement. And you will see that the, when I file, when I file, when I filed with you on, on July 13th revised plans, I also, I also provided revised lists of waivers for the Heather Lane subdivision and the Heather Lane extension subdivision. For the Heather Lane extension subdivision residential compound, several plan sheets were revised, including, and what we covered was expansion of the right-of-way width from 20 feet to 25 feet. We located all of the utilities within the right-of-way. We added bearings and distances for Heather Lane extension, and we changed the slope of Heather Lane extension so we would no longer need a waiver from the maximum street slope regulation. I did provide a letter regarding, regarding the conservation restrictions and public access. Now, we, we submitted a provo, a proposed conservation restriction and, and a restriction plan. And I, I don't believe that, you know, there's been any, any response since, since then from the Conservation Commission about it. But the proposed conservation restriction provides the same protection for wetland resources as was provided in the conservation restriction granted to, by the Petrini Corporation in connection with Riverbend Lane. Brandon, could you put up slide number 12?
Brandon Lee, with the engineering firm, is now putting up a slide for us.
Oh, Brandon, maybe, maybe I've cut my numbers. Yeah, that's, that's, no, yeah. That's, that's it. Could you, could you go to page, I think to page four, Brandon, of that? This is the Petrini conservation restriction. I know it's a little hard to read there. At this, at this size, I'm gonna, I'm gonna expand it myself so I can read it. And basically, it says, "The conservation restriction does not grant to the grantee, to the general public or to any other person, any right to enter upon the premises." That's the, that's the, that's the key language, except that the grantee, that being the town, can enter the premises, you know, to make sure that the, the restrictions, you know, protecting the wetlands' resources are being observed. So the, the conservation restriction that was proposed by the Conservation Commission here basically asked that we track the same languages in the Petrini, Petrini subdivision. And it did not include public access. And I don't believe that conservation, even now, is asking for public access. Brandon, could you now put up slide 15? Okay. This, this, this shows, you know, on the left-hand side of the screen, it shows from Chestnut Street heading east along the river, it shows the properties. The first property is a property that's now owned by an LLC. Mr. Brunner and Mr. Brown are the principals of that LLC. Then you have the, the Pierceak property, which is the subject of the residential compound application. Not shown to the east of that is a very narrow slip of property, strip of property that's owned by Mr. Palladino. And after that, you have Riverbend Lane. Now, also not shown in this plan, but I can describe it for you. There is a, there is a sewer easement across the, across the property that, that heads kind of, if this were, if what you're looking at is, you know, if, if going up is, is directly to the north, there is a, there is a, there, there is, there is a sewer easement that goes, heads, kind of heads southeast across the property, and then go, and then goes to the river, and then, and then crosses, crosses the river and starts up again on the Dedham side. So that would not be, that would not be a proposed route that would do anyone any good. If someone wanted to walk across this property, it's not clear how they would get there unless they walked down our subdivision road, which, you know, we're adamantly opposed to. There is no trail across 770 Chestnut Street. At Chestnut Street itself, at the junction of Chestnut and the river, there's no place for the public to park. It's very, it's very tight there, and the vehicles move pretty fast. If you go to the east of the property, there's no right to, the public to cross, and no, no trail to cross the Palladino property. There's no right to, to, to cross the. to cross the Palladino property, there's no right to to cross the the Petrini subdivision property. So basically, a walking trail, assuming you could get to one, would simply dead-end. So it's really of no use to the public. In a visual observation of the property itself, I think indicates that a public landing doesn't make sense here, particularly in view of the fact that there are numerous other public landing spaces along the river. What else? That's 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 basically it for our for my presentation, except I will say that we did have some additional communications over the last few days with Mr. Bruner and Brown and their attorney, a gentleman named Bruce Henry. And the result of all of that is they indicated that that they intended to to if they're going to make an appearance at all tonight, they're going to speak in support of this application. But I don't know whether Mr. whether Mr. Bruner is 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 on is on this Zoom or not. And obviously, he can speak for himself. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to David Kelly.
Thank you, Bob. Good evening, David Kelly, Kelly Engineering Group. I think Bob did a nice job explaining the plan changes, and possibly I could just show you the changes on the plans themselves. So as Bob described, there were some really minor modifications made to the definitive subdivision plan. And we were we were asked, for instance, to show the drainage easement in more detail. Brandon, if you want to bring up page 25 of the PDF set, it shows the drainage easement. Thank you. As you can see, the drainage easement has now been properly defined on the plan. It was a question of whether it were properly defined on the prior plan, so that's shown on the plan. You can see that it crosses the two lots and the stormwater pond previously reviewed by DPW is in that area that Brandon's highlighting. We Bob also noted that we, in response to direct question from the board, we provided an updated waiver list. Brandon, if you could bring up that's page 39, last second last page of the of this set. Maybe you can zoom in a little bit. And the real purpose of this, I think, was to show the difference between the existing and the provided in the form of waivers. So if we just quickly go down through that, I think it all tells a good story. So relative to the right-of-way, the existing right-of-way width is 15 feet. We're providing 40 feet. We've asked for a waiver from from the 50-foot requirement, but as you can see, it's it'll be a much improved situation from what's there today. The pavement width, the 20 24 foot is the requirement. We're providing 20 feet, and as you can see, there's only 12 feet there today. The street slopes at the intersection, we had a discussion about that last time. That's a actually a reasonably flat slope. It's a little steeper than the town does require. But as we noted, it's it's something that can't be changed because of the physical access to the existing driveways along the new roadway and along the existing existing driveway. You can see the radii, the intersection doesn't change either, but it would result in a waiver. And then curbing, there is no curbing today at all. We're proposing by two minutes that that would still be a waiver. Sidewalks, there's no sidewalks today. We're requesting a waiver. There are no sidewalks on Chestnut Street in that location. It would make not a lot of sense to have a sidewalk. Really, it would just result in more impervious area and possibly more vegetation removal. And then relative to the standard cross-section, it's essentially a repeat of what we just discussed. There's a pavement width today of 12 feet. We'll have 20 when we're finished. So I think this tells a good story in in response to a particular question that the board had, to just be able to compare what's there today to what's going to be there when we're finished. If we move on to the residential compound, we made some changes, again, reasonably minor changes. Chair McKnight asked, Brandon, page 17, please. Chair McKnight asked that we consider a wider right-of-way because the pavement width was essentially extending to the to the width of the of the right-of-way. So what we've done is provided a 25-foot right-of-way in that location instead of the 20 that was shown in the prior plan. We think it's a good suggestion. It'll really clean things up, and it provides an area for snow to be sort of pushed along the edge of the road, which I think was the primary concern. So we made we made that change. And then to once again further clean up the residential compound, we reconfigure the utilities that are in the roadway, same utilities that were shown in the prior plan, but we put them into the right-of-way so that there's no question of easements along along that length. And then we made some revisions to the to the hammerhead to to allow the fire hydrant to be located within the right-of-way. So essentially, it's a fairly it's fairly minor changes. We think all the comments were particularly 20-foot wide, 25-foot wide right-of-way on the residential compound is a really beneficial comment. We appreciate it, and then we're pleased to make the revisions to the plan. But everything else is fairly minor, and I think Bob did a thorough job explaining the the changes in a general general sense and the remaining questions that the board had at the last hearing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Shell, at this point, I want to give the planning board members an opportunity to ask questions, make comments, and I'll start with Mr. Alpert.
I have no questions or comments.
Mr. Jacobs? You're muted.
Sorry about that. Okay. First, I did go over various homeowners association declaration to trust and various instruments that Attorney Smart provided to us three weeks ago. And I think you're right, Bob, that now is not really the time to go over that with a fine-tooth comb, but I will have some pretty minor edits to those, but we can talk about that later. And as to the conservation's Conservation Commission's request for a conservation restriction and not public access, I'm perfectly happy with the restriction that they requested and that Bob's language provided. I would not push for public access. That's my those are all my comments. Thank you.
And Mr. Block?
I concur with my with my colleague and don't have any further comment.
All right. Well, I believe that the questions that we had and comments that we had at our prior hearings have been addressed. I participated in the site visit along with Mr. Alpert and members of the Conservation Towns Conservation Department and our planning director, Lee Newman. And I saw for myself that there's a strip along the river of land that's not in a wetland, but it was clear that that strip doesn't connect with any point of access. It was also clear that there's a bit of a steep bank between that strip and the river so that it's not suitable for canoe landing spot. So I also concur in the as much as I'm an advocate for trails in Needham, I had to, I must say reluctantly, concur with the conservation restriction without public access. And I I have no further questions. So I I will go to see if there are any members of the public now who have who might have questions. Alex, perhaps you'd say a few words to to any members of the public and explaining again how to ask questions.
Sure. Well, there is only one member of the public here, and it's not a phone call, so I'm not going to go into that process. But if anyone would like to raise their hand, you can press the okay, we have one hand raised. So Gene, I can let that person speak if you'd like.
We only have one person. We'll go right ahead and let that person speak. And please introduce yourself with your name and your address.
Okay, you should be able to speak now.
Thank you. It's Simeon Bruner, and I represent the 770 Chestnut Street LLC. And I would say that we are generally in support of the project. We are currently a single lot. We intend, and we have talked to Mr. Newman about the city, about subdividing into three lots, which will be ANIs, and one will enter from Chestnut. But there will be two lots entering from Heather Lane, and we do have an easement on Heather Lane. And there was some concern that the Heather Lane would not be adequate to support our two lots. And without belaboring the point, we support in general the idea, but we would like to ask the board to note that the Heather Lane will be sufficient to support two additional accesses should we buy. And that's all we have to say simply about that.
And but Mr. Bruner, by reference to the plan that happens to be on the screen right now, can you tell us what property is yours?
Yes, we are. That's right there. Whoever's that's our property.
Okay, that lot, that large.
Most of the block, that's correct.
All right.
About seven acres.
Seven acres, okay. And when you speak of having an easement, what you mean is you have rights of access over Heather Lane as, you know, in a butted to what was an existing way. All right. All right, thank you for your comments. And now, if there's no there are no further comments or questions, I don't think we have Lee, correct me if I'm wrong, but are there any comments by that we should be putting into the record here?
Madam Chair?
Yes. Paul?
I was just taking a look at the plans, and I just noticed an issue that I'd like to raise with Bob Smart, Attorney Smart. By changing, I'm looking I'm looking at sheet 4A, the lotting plan. By widening Heather Lane, it appears that you're reducing the line along Chestnut Street on Lot 1 so that it no longer has 150 feet of frontage on Chestnut Street. Look at 3A, existing conditions. That lot has exactly 150 feet of frontage on Chestnut Street at the moment. And looking at sheet 4A, it looks like you're taking like 60 feet away from that lot along Chestnut Street creates creates frontage on Chestnut Street of only 90 feet. And we have we have 150 feet of frontage requirement by our zoning bylaw. How are we going to deal with that?
Well, if I could respond to that, Lot 1 is part of the subdivision. So it's going to have its access on on the subdivision road.
But it's a corner lot. Doesn't it have to have the required frontage on both on both streets on a corner lot?
No, I think it has to have the lot width. It could have frontage, I think, on just the new street that's that's the 150, but it needs to meet the lot width definition coming in off of both streets because it's a corner lot. It's the same situation.
So it needs to have 120 feet of lot width, and it only has 90 feet?
No, I think it needs 150 in this case because it's in the RRC district. It's not in the
I stand corrected, as usual.
A good question, because of course it was the big question of the prior subdivision we were considering, and
That's right.
We want to make sure we're asking the same question of every applicant. All right. So let's see now. So we have no further questions from the public. And it was suggested by Attorney Smart that it's time to close the hearing. Oh, I know, excuse me. I asked the question whether we had any further correspondence from town officials. And I know that there is one that came in just yesterday, addressed to Lee Newman from Tara Gorge, the Public Health Division, and comments on Heather Lane. And she says, the proposed development, once approved, will comprise of five lots. And I think she's talking, yes, she's focusing her comments on the extension for Heather Lane, which will comprise of five lots. And then new construction, oh, she says, is proposed on four of the five lots. The fifth lot, having an existing house, which is is simply scheduled to be moved and relocated on the same lot, but and so this would be a total of five lots. So then she goes on to say, this proposed subdivision would create four individual house lots, including one relocation of a structure in the existing lot, which must conform to current zoning with lots located on New Road off of Chestnut Street, known as Heather Lane Extension. These also be served by municipal water and sewer. And this, this is the list of the Public Health Division comments. We need to assure ensure that owners and builders of all structures to be raised or relocated, each fill out the notice of demolition form. So these do seem to be routine requirements of the Health Department. Then certain additional off-street drainage requirements are indicated. All lots should be graded to the limits of construction so there's no standing water, no nuisance. Grading shall not improperly shed or illegally increase drainage onto adjacent properties. All subsequent developers or builders should be notified of the off-street drainage requirements. If there are difficult or unusual conditions that arise that are determined in the field, the Board of Health may require an as-built grading plan for further evaluation. And this and then the next numbered paragraph five is is key because it has to do with surety. And then following the Board of Health Off-Street Drainage Guidelines for a subdivision, a drainage surety of 3,500 will be required for each lot or 17,500 for the five lot subdivision. And I believe Attorney Smart, you you had a question about wanting to make sure that that was calculated correctly. And Lee Newman, you were also looking at that. Is everybody satisfied with that amount for the surety?
It's not it's not clear to me that that you that you need that you need a surety when you're taking an existing structure and you're simply you're simply going to relocate it on the property.
Well, it's the point of view of the Public Health Division that we do need that. And it may be, if I may speculate, that the relocation of the building it may be, if I may speculate, that the relocation of the building could change the topography and the drainage for lot, and that's what this is entitled, is meant to ensure is that the drainage is done properly. So I don't know that, you know, I mean, if we will close the hearing, this is going to be the, the surety requirement. So we should be addressed now if there's a problem or else we're going to insist on it.
Well, that would be, you know, that would, that would be my concern is, is whether, as to whether this is really necessary. I, I don't want to hold up the decision for this. Perhaps Mr. Pierceak, I think, wants to speak.
Yes, Madam Chair. I have no problem with the letter from the Board of Health requesting the surety of seventeen five.
All right. Well, we'll just go with that then, and I think that's the only.
Well, Madam Chair, what about the issue of the lot with, the lot one? Lee, can we deal with that with a waiver? You're, you're muted.
I'm sorry. I think it's, I think it's the same, I think it's the same issue. They have to have a lot width coming off of both streets of a hundred and fifty feet. Or it was the issue that we had on Grove Street where a separate parcel got created so that it had no frontage. It wasn't a corner lot.
So we may, we may not be able to close the hearing until this is resolved. I mean, short of creating a lot A, Bob.
Let me attempt to express my understanding of, of what is meant. We're, we're not talking about lot frontage, right? We're talking about lot width.
Yeah.
Measured, I believe you said earlier, Lee, that it was measured at, you know, at the time of the construction of the house, the lot width has to be a certain width at a certain point with respect to the house. Is that correct?
That, that is correct, but the lot itself has to enable that. And in this case, on its face, the lot doesn't enable it. Because if you look at Chestnut Street, the frontage, the frontage is ninety feet, and then it actually gets narrower than ninety feet. So it's impossible to have a lot width of a hundred and fifty feet coming in off of Chestnut Street through the house. I mean, so on, on its face, the lot doesn't enable it.
I see. Okay.
So, I mean, it's a whole issue now of creating the parcel, you know, so that it doesn't have any frontage, so that it's not a corner lot.
So, you know.
To be able to respond intelligently on that point, I need, I need to take a look at the, at the lot width provision and think about it, and I could get back to, I could get back to the board on that. I mean, if necessary, it seems to me we could, we could create, as Mr. Albert, as you described, a parcel A so that we don't have, so that we don't have frontage on Chestnut Street because clearly we have enough acreage to do it. I prefer not to do it if we don't have to.
And I would prefer that you not do it considering the issue that we have at three ninety Grove Street because it would, you know, it would, it would raise that, that issue. But I'm just raising it from the point of view of can we close the hearing or do we need to continue until August eleventh in order to, to find a way to resolve this issue?
I think we need to get this issue resolved because we have to, you can't approve a plan that doesn't have a legal lot on it. I mean, we can still move forward trying to do the decisions. I think there were a couple outstanding issues here. One is we still need a close-out letter from the engineering department because we don't have a close-out letter from them in terms of their final review of the drawings. We need a final letter from conservation. I think they're, they're working with the applicant on the final line for that conservation easement, and I'm hoping that they'll be able to resolve that. Debbie had hoped to get a letter to me today on the exact location of the easement. So I mean, I think we could continue it for the purpose, I had thought originally we would just continue it for the purpose of accepting the conservation letter and the engineering letter, but now that we have this other issue, we could maybe continue it for these three reasons and narrow down the reason for the continuation and still with the expectation that we would have decisions ready for them, which was the plan on August eleventh, draft decisions.
Bob, are you okay with that?
That's, that's fine.
All right, then, we need a motion, and I guess it's a motion to continue the hearing.
Right. So, Lee, what time on August eleventh?
I guess it's going to have to be maybe eight thirty because I have a zoning hearing at seven thirty and we have Grove Street at eight now, so I guess eight thirty.
So I move that we continue the hearing to August eleventh at eight thirty, but solely for the purpose of, of obtaining further information on the lot width issue for Lot One, the conservation letter from the Conservation Commission, and what, what did you say, Lee?
The final engineering review.
The final engineering review.
So Mr. Alpert made the motion that we continue the hearing for those three purposes. That motion was seconded. So I'll call for a vote. Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so that is unanimous, unanimous decision of the four members present. Okay, we're all set for now on that then. And I, good. Thank you, Mr. Smart, Mr. Pierceak, Mr. Kelly, and Mr. Lee. And so, okay, so we're moving on, and this really, we're at the end of our agenda other than to mention minutes. We had some draft minutes that were sent around, and I made some comments and sent them back, and so there hasn't been any revision, so we don't have any final minutes to vote on tonight. And Lee, is there a report from, from US Planning Director?
Sure. I just want to let the board know that I have, we are still moving forward on the Highway Commercial One zoning. We had the meeting and we talked about the, the next steps with the working group. I received a proposal from GPI on, on the traffic study, and that's been submitted to the town manager, and I think it's going to go out to the full working group to see if they will approve that so that we can move forward on that planning study. And then just a reminder that the zoning hearing on the zoning for Avery Square is scheduled for next, for the next planning board meeting on August eleventh. The selectmen are accepting the articles tonight, and the hearing notices are going to run Thursday of this week and Thursday of next week, and so we'll be in compliance with the zoning act and what our statutory responsibilities are. And that's all I have to report.
So the, the hearing on the zoning for Avery Square will also be August eleventh?
Yes, at seven thirty.
At seven thirty, wow, we're going to have a busy evening.
Jean, I would just, this is Alex. The minutes actually were redlined in your packets, so these are ready for vote.
Oh, I'm very sorry. I guess I didn't get to the very end of the packet. That's my fault. Well, if, I don't know whether, did anybody else take a look at the final minutes?
I did. I thought they both looked fine, as corrected.
Well, then we'll rely on Mr. Jacobs' review, and I'll ask for a motion. And also, those, the dates of those minutes were May twentieth and June second, correct, Alex?
Correct.
So if we have, if somebody would like to offer a motion to accept May twentieth and June second minutes. Okay, Mr. Jacobs moved, and that was seconded, and okay, call for vote. Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
And Mr. Block?
Yes.
And the chair votes, the chair votes, and it's are approved by a unanimous vote of the four present. Okay, I think we have.
Jean, I think we have one piece of correspondence that you might want to mention, there's something about a coming amendment to the Cogswell Building.
I realize now that I did not get to the end of the packet. Lee or Marty, would you like to explain that?
Well, I think that they're, I think that they're exploring doing a solar installation on the roof at the Cogs, at the Cogswell site on the, on the storage building.
Oh, yes.
They're not sure if they're going to go forward with that program yet. If they do go forward, I've communicated to them that it's going to require an amendment of the planning board's permit, and they're aware of that procedural program.
All right. So that's essentially where we are with that. Was there a letter or something in the packet about that, or you're just reporting that?
I'm just reporting that, I, I think I had, I had included in the package an email that I had gotten from a public facilities indicating that they were, you know, considering this and pursuing this, and I had alerted them on what the procedure would be because we, we hold the permit for that property.
Yes, and it did seem to be a significant enough change that, that we should have a formal amendment with a hearing. I believe that was the concept.
Yes, that, that was the decision that was made.
Well, I move to adjourn.
Right. Okay, we'll vote on adjournment. Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Block?
Yes, Madam Chair.
And the chair votes to adjourn. Oh, boy.
We got it in before ten o'clock, Jean. Good job.
Not bad, not bad.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.